The district lines as is, and we kind of try to fill in the blanks.
But to increase a district doesn't take four officers. In reality, it takes about six.
Eventually, that's what we'd like to get to.
Four does not allow you, I mean, let's be realistic. Four does not allow you maybe on a shift.
That you wouldn't be able to do that this year or next year. Yes.
Four may allow you to change your district, which would be a huge mistake, for one shift, maybe two, but it doesn't allow you to change and add a district. Four officers will not do that.
No, true, but what we could do is we could redraw the district lines, but it's a manpower piece. We would want to look at that. Just to, that's more of a workload distribution thing that we want to try for each of the officers to have a workload.
I understand that, but I don't.
Yeah, no, we would need, you're right, absolutely. We would need more numbers to do that.
Add a district?
What's that?
Add an entirely not, you know.
To, well, redistricting might not be, so we have nine districts that we define. I know the fire department does it differently based on their fire stations. That's been the district based on what we called our minimum staffing. What's the minimum amount of officers that we can possibly work with? We haven't changed that because we really haven't increased our patrol allocation. And so increasing those numbers would eventually lead to that redistricting and a better distribution of the workload. But we're taking an overall look at this. That redistricting is down the line. We're looking at the workload. We're looking at the footprint of the city. We're looking at, you know, we're comparative studies as to officers per thousand. That's that study that I sent you guys, and we'll do, we'll continue to do those and redo those. And that looks at all staffing, but we're really concentrating on essential services here. We want to make sure that we can still maintain, if we have losses like we've suffered here, those essential services. We don't want to tell you all of a sudden, well, we're not going to respond to that. We want to maintain services if we deal with losses that are expected and unexpected so that we can continue to provide a certain level of service and safety to the community. And that's what we want to maintain. We don't want to give up. We don't want to make backward, you know, we don't want to make backward progress. We want to make forward progress to make sure that we're always preparing for what may or may not happen.
Exactly. And I agree with Alex's comments and points because I've raised that before, but rightfully so. I think it was Matthew, but I said, well, if we had one officer a year, well, that's going to take several years to do that if we looked at one officer, but it's some pre-planning. But not being prepared, Chief, to your point, not being prepared is not an option for this community. And we have got to be prepared.
But you can, you can lay out all the well-laid plans that you guys want to, the next council changes it. You can't force a council to, into a budget decision.
Why we should do the four now?
Yeah. I think, and I think we need to look at both of them. So I have been lucky enough to spend half my days at North Middle School this year, and I had a good conversation with Officer Dan Hutton, who is coming up for retirement in two or three years, he mentioned. And that was the first thing that he mentioned is, hey, there's more of these down the line. We need to build staffing. That should be a priority. I think it's going to take a little bit of both. I think, I am for the four positions, absolutely. But I think we need to look at yearly having at least an officer fixed into the budget so that we can, we can get up to those levels that we need to be. I don't want to say two, and then, you know, maybe we'll talk about two next year. And then maybe in a few more years, we'll see where we're at and maybe add one or two then. I think it needs to be something that we are, we are showing in good faith that we are concerned about this, and this is a priority. Our safety is a priority. In the news just yesterday, we saw South Sioux's crime rates going up. That's right across the river from us. We are asking our officers to do more and more every day, and we need to show them our support, in my opinion. It's something that we should plan for future years. But I think we're in a stage where we're in dire need right now.
But Chief, make it clear for me, please, that retirement, for whatever reason an officer leaves the force, you have that position budgeted. That, you can replace that officer, so.
That's correct, and to the extent that we know that they're coming, we advance filled positions to the best of our ability.
Yeah, their budget is filled based on their complement, so the number of officers in their complement is budgeted, yes.
And our salary lines usually are in very good shape because we lose people to military where they're on unpaid leave. And the people coming in at the bottom make much less than the patrol officer who has four, five years on who's at master patrol status, so we're bringing them in at a much lower rate. So I mean, as far as fiscally, when we bring them in to do that pipeline hiring, I really don't, it really doesn't have a significant impact.
No, and this is part of that turnover budget we talked about, where we have less salaries than we budget. That's how we were able to budget about a million dollars' worth of a turnover budget because that, those salaries are unused in years. He's not, I mean, the police department isn't the only department, but there are a lot of other departments. There's the vacancies there. You know, each year we have that, so.
Motion to amend on the four.
I was going to say, where it's challenged.
Yes. This is for two officers.
Because it sounds like, you know, Dan's motion is to have four and be able to put it forth and have it increase on the tax levy of that five, whatever it is. The mayor's saying two. I mean, my proposal of what I was thinking is at least doing the four and having this first year, two of them be covered by Red Flex, and the next year would be on taxes. Which, to the mayor's point, then you have two that are on the taxes, and then the next year, if we wanted to do two, it would be on the taxes. I'm saying you start the process of four now, and you only have all four hitting the full budget next year as well. So I mean, it's kind of the same ends. I don't know, or three.
We'll let her sort that out. Yep, she's the expert. Yep, good point.
So it's just tough to.
Well, we have to vote, just for the two officers.
Yes, for the, motion to amend for the two officers.
Yes, for the two officers.
Call the role in the amendment.
So if the amended motion passes, we have two, well, then we vote on the.
We'll vote on the original motion.
As amended.
Yes.
And then it would be the two.
Okay, so the vote for the two officers amendment right now. Scott?
Yes.
Waters?
No.
Moore?
No.
O'Kane?
No.
Shaner?
No.
Okay, so now a vote on the original motion. Do we have the four officers?
For that now? Or it's already?
No, but they're already been seconded.
And this is for the four.
Correct.
For the four.
And then the question I have is, then, yes, do we just want that to be taxed, or do we want that?
Teresa's going to work on that, bring it back.
Careful report back on appropriate funding levels.
Yes.
Okay.
Because I also want to look at the overall operating budget.
Yes, I agree with you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay. Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Can hardly wait to read the journal tomorrow. No.
That's the four one, four office, adding of four officers.
Just, I don't take it that way, though, Mayor, because.
But I don't care what you take it. I know what's going to get reported.
Well, but, no, but you support it. You support it, but you, we're talking about different numbers. Two officers versus four, but you still are supportive of it.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
And I'm going to support your decision, so.
Right.
Councilman, I want to thank you for your support. We have a terrific community that supports their law enforcement, which is why we have people that want to work here. Your support is key to that, and I appreciate all of it and all of the consideration. We understand we have to be fiscally responsible, but thank you for the support.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Chief.
Forty-one's just historical, but yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Number forty-one, tourism memo regarding hotel motel tax trend for the past five years. This item is in your report, page fifty-one. The memo I just sent to you, we will discuss later. I didn't know if we would discuss more of it at this time. But the request was for the trend of hotel motel tax cost for the last five years, or revenue, I guess.
I was going to say, we can either talk about forty-one or wait till forty, I'm fine either way. But just, the only thing that I would point out with forty-one, looking historically at the trend over the last five years, is obviously you have COVID impacting the previous two, not FY twenty-two, but mostly the FY twenty and twenty-one. The other thing that Teresa and I were just clarifying recently was that you will notice, I think in FY twenty-two, you felt the effects of a tourism bureau and of us coming back. And Teresa said she could pull the first, but I'm fairly certain that that's the largest hotel motel tax we've ever collected in our history. With maybe the exception of when CF was being built and utilizing those hotels, that would maybe be the only, but otherwise historically, that would have been the largest that we've ever received. But we can, let's talk more about it then at forty-nine.
Next item, number forty-two, WIC IT, discussion of an additional GIS position. The IP, oh, excuse me, operating page four oh six. Number forty-two.
Hi, John.
Just want to add one thing here. Depending on the decision of the council, just a reminder that since WIC is funded through both the county and the city, it would have to ultimately be approved by the county as well.
Is it a fifty-fifty split?
It's a sixty-forty.
Sixty-forty, okay. That was just recently adjusted, wasn't it?
Yes.
If I remember correctly.
John, will you please state your name?
John Malloy, IT. Again, Julie introduced the discussion. We talked a little bit at the last council hearing, or council budget hearing regarding GIS. The risk that we're, have with demographics in the next few years, I see that as an issue. The heightened awareness of the need for additional GIS resources going forward. I believe we're the only major entity in Iowa that does not have a formalized GIS department within IT. I do have one administrator that does that function in the next five years. We talked a little bit about succession planning and having a plan, and this is my raising awareness to this need.
I believe the mayor asked for this to come back for consideration, Mr. Mayor.
I was only joking, but.
You were not.
Well, we're still in our honeymoon phase, and the mayor, so.
That ended the second day I got back.
Where's Steve Hansen at?
Need the preamble here.
So really, it is a full-time position, but the salary is shared.
Sure, correct.
Right. And do you feel like you have support of the county? What's the temperature check there?
I gave the county a heads up, so I did not get any push-up, pushback on that as yet. So they are aware of the, I mentioned at our WIC commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I did not feel that temperature as far as that kickback, and I.
Right, I was present. I didn't hear anything either, so.
They tweaked their budget, though, didn't they, the county?
I guess if the council was supportive, you could do it contingent upon approval by the county.
Yes, that's what I was just.
And then we'd bring it back at our final budget approval.
Did they already have their, they already had their wrap-up, didn't they?
Not sure if they formally approved their budget all the way yet.
I thought they did on Tuesday.
Oh, did they?
That's what I thought was on the news in the paper.
Well, we'll see.
Because what would the impact for our portion be?
Look, I don't even know that we've calculated out exactly.
I guess it'd be off the top, just sixty, seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Guess in total cost, hundred and ten, hundred and forty.
About a seventy thousand.
Is that about right, John?
Yes.
So it would be about, not very much. Yeah, but you're only going to be, if four cops costs you five fifty-eight.
Yeah, exactly.
This would be.
And that's five hundred K. This is sixty grand. A good deal, so.
I didn't say that. I'm just trying to explain what it costs. Then you'll want a pay study to make sure the guy's making enough after he's been on the job for a week.
You do your own study.
He's clairvoyant on top of everything else.
I did pretty good ninety in my head.
Yeah. Got a calculator sitting over there.
May I dismiss, Mayor?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Whatever you want, pal.
We'll see you on the court.
He was looking for you earlier for some topic. I can't remember what it was.
Oh, the fiber.
Oh, the fiber.
In his mind, it doesn't make sense to use MetroLink. I don't know what his mind, how it works.
We didn't get an explanation as to why.
Oh, yeah, you didn't recommend.
He probably didn't even know about.
I missed, must have been one of my.
Did you even ask him, Gordon, or? Oh, that's what I thought. Nobody even talked to John.
At the stoplights, yeah. I'm not familiar with the project.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
I passed on your feelings that you don't have an appetite for managing that fiber. Your department doesn't.
And John, I had mentioned, we have an RFP, we're a firm to manage our fiber.
That's wonderful.
We're kind of wading our way through it, trying to.
Oh, I.
We're going to finally get somebody that knows what the heck they're doing in that area.
Right, that's why we need someone to manage it who's an expert.
That's what we want, is.
In the best interest of the city to go.
We've been left down, so we've got to get somebody that.
On the right road on that. Yes, I'd be interested in knowing about that.
All right.
Do you want to do anything on the GIS position, or do we want to?
I'm sure that somebody does. They can't let John go. Not what he needs.
You might want to wait for a second while we decide here.
Okay.
Need a motion?
You'd need a motion. Okay. No, it's not.
But isn't he also asking for some big software they didn't approve for that same amount?
And they approved one and not the other.
Yep, and that's in the technical change to remove it.
Huh?
Technical change to remove it because of.
But that's what I'm saying, so it's really a net cost of zero under that scenario.
Provided that the county.
Provided the county, but we're not going to vote for it if the county doesn't.
So are we going to do a contingent on the county split, or beings were deleting the other item, are we just going to approve it?
But that was based upon the county. That's why you're deleting it, because the county didn't agree to do that.
I would recommend if you want to do this, you make the motion subject to county approval share.
I'm not making a motion.
Okay, I move to approve with the county's support of their forty percent share.
Second.
Let's see, amount.
Moore?
Ninety grand roughly, at sixty percent.
So fifty-four?
So it'd be like.
I don't know.
Well, we'll probably be about sixty, seventy thousand, I would guess, with benefits and everything, yeah. Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
I got to keep you on your toes, man.
That's the four one.
I knew they had three votes.
Oh, my gosh. Next item, forty-three, under other, a memo regarding the summary of indirect cost allocation plan. Page fifty-two in your report book.
Have a good day.
You had requested a summary of all of the different departments.
Requested. Get what you needed? Were you able to read it?
I was, well, I was.
I know it's a lot of information.
Yeah. No, thank you for putting that together.
Forty-three.
Forty.
It's this three-page, three-page spreadsheet that nobody can understand, but the guy that did it. So I mean, he did a good job, obviously. At least he wowed you with numbers, so.
Oh, this is what I do for a living, Julie. This is big print for me.
I mean, there was a significant amount of work done with city staff to determine how the allocations would be allocated, you know, all the different allocating departments and whatnot, so I think we've come up with a pretty good plan.
Sounds good.
Do you have additional questions? The next item is item forty-four, a memo regarding the open record request processing costs. Page fifty-six in your memo packet.
So we don't do one until they pay us upfront.
Correct.
And if you have twenty-five dollars an hour, that's a thousand dollars a week. That's fifty-two thousand without any benefits.
If we fill the person doing this full-time?
Well, you get, you're supposed to be able to recoup your cost. So I don't believe you have any person remotely close to fifty-two thousand dollars a year in benefits, with benefits, in this building.
I would ask that Nicole discuss this, how they became, how they determined the hourly rate. There are parameters in place.
I understand, but I'm just saying, if you're able to, if you really are able to reasonably collect your costs, I'd like to know what person in this building makes under twenty-five dollars an hour with benefits.
I guess, are we asking for another position to be added?
No, no, I just don't think, I don't think you're recouping your cost.
How we recoup the cost.
Oh, sure. These fees were set quite a while ago. I think the policy was last revised in 2013. The police department and fire department have different rates than what we charge for general city requests, and this is amount that we haven't been challenged on. I know other municipalities have been challenged because they, the state ombudsman felt that they were too high.
Good, I'd like him to tell us they're too high. Because I don't want frivolous, I want people to have access to public records, but I don't want them to have frivolous deals that we subsidize their.
Their requests.
And one of the other things that we're looking at doing, because I handle most of these when they come in and I'm sending them to the departments to answer. The police department just recently started using software for their requests, and I'm working with Ann Wastra because we can add on to that. So we have a central point on the city's website where people can make requests, so we can document them and have a lot less staff time involved with that, which I think will help us, so we're in the process of adding that. But we can certainly look at fee. That's absolutely something that we can do because it's a city policy. We can look and look at increasing it and bring that recommendation to the council. I have no problem doing that because obviously twenty-five dollars an hour is far less than most people make an hour that are touching.
Yeah, without benefits.
Right.
Yeah, that's my point.
Right.
Mayor and Council, I'll work with Nicole, and we'll come back with the revised hourly rate.
Nicole, I'm just dumbfounded that, and we talked about this a week ago, that how many hours it does take and how, what a process it is, then you're touching all of it yourself, along with all of your other duties, and that these requests are not going to go down. They're going to continue to go up.
Right, and we're trying to, when we have really large requests come in that we think are potentially frivolous requests, we'll tell them, we're not going to start working on this until you pay us the estimated cost, and it could go up, it could go down. We don't know. We just had a recent one where they, we were asked for something, and it generated six hundred and thirty email responses that I have to go through, you know, so that's kind of, they're looking for one word. So we do our best to, you know, there are people that legitimately want any of the information. Most of them are handled very quickly. We can just email it out the door. It's not taking a ton of time. But we do get the occasional ones that are thousands of dollars' worth of information that is being requested.
Right, we don't get ahead of this by linking on to the software, adding on to that, or something to lessen the workload.
Sure.
To streamline that process, you're going to have to add somebody to do that work.
Well, and I, and other cities like Des Moines, I think they have a specific person that handles all of their information requests, but their volume could be considerably more than what, you know, we're touching to. But in other cities, they do have an individual that handles the requests. And the Public Information Board, IPB with the state, is now proposing rules that are stricter for cities to comply with. So for example, once we get a request in, we're supposed to reach out within two days to provide a response, tell them when we're going to provide the information. So it's tightening it up a little bit. We try to always do that, but we know that it's going to be more restrictive going forward. And there's also some legislation that's addressing that this year, too, that's proposed as well.
And then you have a closed date that you must provide them with the documents, want to acknowledge that the request has been made?
The general rule right now is that most requests should be complied with in ten to twenty days, but there's no case law on that. That's just kind of a general rule. And some of them are far more complex, and they could take six months to produce, but it could be coming where we have a specific deadline. And there's been litigation with other cities, unlike the Iowa Public Health Systems and things like that.
So do you think legislature, legislation is going to require that you have a person be the handler of that process? I mean, do you see that coming?
I think if the legislation is passed, they're just going to put more definitive timelines, and we're already trying to meet the generalized, you know, best practices. But I think they're going to, it could be potentially put into law.
But they won't require that you have a dedicated staff trained at a certain level or something?
No, not that I've seen. We just need to make sure we're in compliance because we don't want any criminal violations for failure to produce records.
Okay, well, I think we should kind of keep that in mind a little bit, and I'm sure you will as, you know, it fluctuates, but.
Yes, I'll work with Bob, too, and we'll work with an increased rate for considering.
That software sounds like a good idea to.
Yes, yes. I've been working with Lisa McConnell and Ann Wastra related to that, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, number forty-five, memo regarding Red Flex revenues. I think we've discussed this.
Covered that.
Move the cameras.
Item forty-six, memo regarding renewable fuels revenue. Report page fifty-nine.
Seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars.
Let me remind you, that number was supposed to be five million.
Two million.
Five million is your.
This is only six months.
It is not going to get five million.
Hi, Tom.
Hello. So these numbers you're seeing are what, in America, pretty much pays up for projection. What we haven't been paid yet is all the gas that's in storage. So we haven't sold an actual drop of gas into the pipeline to our broker yet.
Where's it being stored?
Because GA has not approved our pathway yet. About eight months ago, they told us it'd be two months, so every couple of months, they keep saying about two months away.
And there's no recourse. We can't tell them we're missing out on revenue.
Nope. It's kind of double-edged sword. These would have been sold like last year. They would have sold at a lower price.
Yeah.
Higher this year. As you know, the markets are variable. But we have about two point five million in storage right now, dollars' worth. But until we get the pathway approved, we cannot sell it.
And they just keep delaying.
Yep. We're not the only city experiencing these.
I was just going to ask that. Is that specific to city, or?
Did Des Moines get approved?
We have no reason to believe that we won't get approved. Everything's looking positive. Our consultant, the co-engineers, they're, they think everything is going well.
Did Des Moines get approved, their pathway? Because we are.
Their pathway was a little bit easier than ours. They sell a gas that's dirtier than ours, if you will. It's not actually dirtier, but it's not as renewable. So their path was a little.
So the minute we get the green flag, the green light, the checkered flag, no, that's the end.
All that cash is going to be rolling.
That's what I was wondering. What's your turnaround on that? I mean, is it already, the brokers know that it's available, and they'll be.
Yep, we'll off, we'll off-sell it as much as we can, the maximum every month, until we get rid of it.
Where is it stored?
It's stored virtually.
I was just going to say that.
It's not actually stored. It's in the system.
It's credited.
And they pay for it with Bitcoin.
So it's actually being used by everyone, and, you know, as it's being injected, it's being used.
We've built up a credit that ultimately can be sold based on the quantity we put in the system.
You have two and a half million dollars of credit.
We estimate we have about two and a half million dollars' worth of supplied into the system.
Sell high, sell high.
Yeah.
Just like storing your grain at the elevator, isn't it, Mayor?
You don't know if it's really yours there.
I know it. You're crossing your fingers at the co-ops.
That's where we are. We're going through the process. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good news, really.
Just a reminder, these are technical changes. If you want to pull something out for a separate voter discussion, that may as they go along. Okay, number forty-seven, economic and community development, technical change updating the complement based on the proposed organizational chart presented, which was just approved at council Monday. Number forty-eight, under fire.
We're done.
Under fire, technical change, increasing salaries and related benefits in accordance with the newly negotiated contract. Number forty-nine, tourism, technical change, changing the tourism funding to four percent of the hotel motel tax with a maximum of a hundred, excuse me, a minimum of a hundred thousand and fifteen percent of anything above two point five million.
Is that gross revenue?
Revenue, yes.
Sorry. I couldn't help myself. There's any handling fee, or?
Any expenses?
So for FY twenty-two, it would have been another fifty-five hundred dollars to the, or a thousand, a hundred thousand.
It'd be fifteen percent of anything over the two point five is what was proposed here.
About thirty-seven thousand over the two point five.
And so I missed the end of the conversation where the proposal was that fifteen percent. I think a couple of things. First off, I truly appreciate the willingness of the council to revisit this. I think that it moves us in the right direction, moving off of a line item for a hundred K and moving towards a percentage. I think that's smart. I think it's necessary so that we don't feel that we have to come and be approving this all the time. we don't feel that we have to come and be approving this all the time. It's just more based on, based on the work that we're doing, exactly what's happening, to be able to get that 4%. I would, I would really argue that if you look at those figures, the last figure that was brought in, if in fact that is the most hotel motel tax we've ever received as a community, with possibly the exception due to CF, I think that's a direct correlation to the work that really has went in and trying to lead up and promote a lot of these different events that have been happening in our community. And what I worry, or what I think is misguided is giving only 15% of that effort towards refueling it or putting it back into the CBB. That's basically saying the effort that you're making, all of the people and the organization is putting into this to grow that tax, you're only giving them 15% of their effort. Because I think that it's like, we should be looking at 100% of that effort being rewarded and just seeing it as a reinvestment. You're literally just investing in that organization, saying continue to bring more of these events and more of these sponsorships, opportunities to continue to grow that fund and grow your staff to be able to handle that. Now, I understand that maybe we won't get the 100% of anything growth over that baseline, but I do think that the baseline is already heavily weighed high based off of the work that the CBB did. If the CBB wasn't there in the '23, I think it would be much lower. And so.
But when did they start?
Um, this would be year three, I believe.
Back to FY 2018. Oh, that's.
No, that's just the tax credit.
Yep. I'm going to look and see.
But it had a slow start, too.
Yes.
I'd, I'd move to, I'd move that to, that the 2.5 be reduced to the 2.4 and that the 15% be increased to the 50%, 50%.
I'll second that. Whoops, go ahead, Dan.
And the only other question, and I appreciate that, I think if we can get to the 50%, that lowers to 2.4, I think that at least helps a little bit. The other thing that I would just ask, and this is literally just a temperature gauge to see what the council thinks and what's the, what they would like to do, because Teresa and I and Kristi Franz, actually with Explorers Sioux City is here, if you have any direct questions. But what I've talked with the organization as well as Teresa about is eventually moving off this 4% figure and what we can do to increase that. Because I think you will notice based off of our comp sets to what other communities are doing across the state is that we are incredibly behind, that we are really behind in operating with one hand tied behind our back. And so I, while I appreciate, and I know that Kristi appreciates, the ability to go off of this and just give us the 50% of any growth, what I was talking with her about today is that even if we sold out every single hotel room in our community moving forward, if you stay at 4% of that, you're still only, budget is only going to be able to be so much, where you won't be able to add staff, you won't be able to bring in new events or different programming or add amenities. So what I wonder is, when you're looking at, I think the other comp, the lowest number that they receive is 24%, if I recall. But I think that my thought was, no Waterloo, Waterloo has a different, while they have grants and then the convention center and discretionary, so they're kind, so that's kind of a unique funding model. 34 would be council bluffs. So I mean, being at 4%, I'm, I'm asking for ideas from anyone on the council or Teresa. I just think that we should incrementally try to have that percentage increase. And to the mayor's point, we've all said it, this means I don't think that we can hold future councils accountable and say, you're going to continue this increase, but at least if you had an idea of every year you're increasing by 2%, you know, if that's what we want to do is two, then six, then eight, at least then the city can budget around what they know is going to be coming in and they know that higher percentage is going to be there because currently we're looking at how can we hire additional staff to be able to meet the need and do these different duties that would be able to bring in more revenue for the city. And I'm just afraid if we don't start increasing that percentage while we appreciate this growth, it's just not going to realize its full potential.
So increase it, the 4% to what?
That's my, that's my question.
The 4% hotel, that's, that's state law, though, isn't it?
No, he means hit the CBB share of it.
Oh, yeah. Increase your percentage. Well, that's all well and good, but, but, and I appreciate what they're doing. But by the same token, the city's made significant investments in, in areas of quality of life.
Of amenities, yeah.
That have brought some of this stuff, too. We, we helped fund some of the property taxes for the arena. We've allowed the arena to take over the, the, you know, nobody wants to talk about.
Use law buy and sell stuff.
The, that exists there that continues to grow. And, and we've made, you know, significant investments in the expo center, all of which have a direct impact on the number of hotel rooms.
Yes.
So I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm willing to try to increase what they get because I do think there's a benefit. I don't see any problem with that as long as it's based on a percentage. My, my problem is that, that, you know, we're in a tri-state area. I got to believe Waterloo probably has a deal with Cedar Falls. I don't, because hotel rooms, actually, a lot of them are in Cedar Falls, not, there aren't a lot of hotel rooms in Waterloo. So I got, is that a combination Waterloo, Cedar Falls?
Do you know, Krista?
I'm guessing it is.
I'm not sure if that's information that I can get, though.
I, I, I don't think Waterloo necessarily would have 1,500 motel rooms by themselves. Maybe they do.
They may. And they, it's all self-reported. All the information that I have on, that I provided to Alex is self-reported from the destinations themselves.
But it's time the other communities here that we talked about that still aren't on board.
Well, and the only one that's not is South Sioux City.
Well, you know what?
And we continue, oh, Mayor.
It's not, you know, it's just time. They have, they have a direct benefit for what you're doing. NAIA volleyball, NAIA basketball, field, Phil South Sioux. So it's time they step up on this deal, too.
And, and I think that we all as a board would agree, and I think we've had multiple conversations with Ralph, who's the GM at, at the Marriott. I know that Mr. Gleason is, is kept abreast of those types of things, too. But I was talking, Julie asked this, was earlier, there is a CBB presence in South Sioux City and we were trying to have that communication of how some of those funds could go towards our effort as well, that we thought that would be mutually beneficial. Last I knew, they were still trying to navigate how those funds could cross state lines or what could be done. But Mayor, I, hey, I don't disagree with you and I don't think Kristi would disagree with you. I will say, though, that North Sioux City, you know, they do chip in as well as their hotel properties. The Lions share probably somewhere 75% plus are all hotels in the Sioux City market, but those major players outside of the city are players.
They're showing, yeah.
And contributing with the exception of South Sioux City.
So there's no state line problem with that, obviously.
Well, that was a council direction, so their city council is what pays into our CBB right now. And then those hotels pay the percentage in, and there's not a problem there. So like the Marriott could sign on and give that percentage on, or if the South Sioux City Council wanted to, they could. I'm confident that the CBB could, but they said that they were navigating that last I knew. And again, that was probably six months ago.
Right. But then they don't reap the benefit of our own Explorers Sioux City helping to block off rooms for events and things like that if they're not a member of that.
Correct. And we don't direct people towards those rooms because they're not participants.
And the only good news for your organization, if there ever was good news that comes out of the state, which is so rare, I have to at least acknowledge there is something good there. They're, they are talking an entertainment tax similar to what Omaha has. I know it has about as much chance of passing as a good snowstorm in July, but nevertheless, that's the first time they've ever talked about that. So I would hope that there is some movement there because I would be more than, I'm only talking for myself, but I'd be more than willing to split that newfound revenue that we wouldn't, again, at 50% from day one because.
So like an entertainment district?
Yes.
Right.
And, and Mayor, I want to touch base on one thing you said as far as the investment. Thank you, Kristi. With one of the things you said about our investment in that and how that supports or how that impacts. Because I agree. I don't disagree at all. I think where I'm coming from and why I want to direct as much as possible or increasing that percentage towards the CBB is because their job is to actively recruit those things to increase our tax. Whereas you're, whereas our use of those dollars are providing at least physical assets to utilize, I think then their job is to make sure that they're filled as regularly as possible, increasing our revenue coming in. And so that's where it's a return on investment. The more money we fuel into this, the more, I, she's only successful if she's bringing more money back into us, increasing our budgets and ability to make more of those physical assets. And I think, and Dan, Dan and Julie were in the sports commission meeting where we kind of discussed this, that we really do feel that our community is at a unique time where we're experiencing so much growth because of places like the expo center and other places we've made these investments, that if there's anything we can do to try to fuel that momentum, that now is really a good time to be able to do that. And, and we just need the budget to support.
Teresa thinks that it'll be a little over 2.5 million bucks. And so that would be at least a $50,000 increase. And I personally will amend my motion to include that in this fiscal year's budget.
Yep.
Yeah, that would, if we can.
If there's a second to that.
Second.
Second?
Yeah, that's right. She did the original. Change my motion, then. I'm not for sure that you would need an E911 group here when, because I'm the guy making the motion. You'd always think I'm so anti-trism that I thought for sure.
Get the paddles.
I was only trying to get you.
Do we have anyone here, please?
I was only trying to cause you to have a heart attack and you disappointed me.
Oh, trust me.
What's your, what's your caution now?
Everything above 2.4 million dollars going forward, including this fiscal year, will be given 50% to the tourism board and 100,000 floor. So it could be 100 plus 50%. So if they went to 2.6 million this year, they would share.
They get the 4% of that.
Get your base.
They would get 100,000 plus 100,000.
Okay. You're doing that for FY '23.
Well, you would get, you would get 4% of the one or 2.6.
We didn't budget as much as what they're, what they're at or what they hope to be at.
So you'd use the 23 actuals for the 24 budget.
I'm just saying everything above 2.4 going forward.
Yes. Yep.
They get 100,000 plus everything above 2.4, 50%.
Right. And the city still gets a nice share of it as well.
Starting for FY '24, starting right now.
Right now.
So it's starting now. But they won't know till the end of the year.
Yeah, we don't know till the end of the year.
They'll get it to start their next, I don't know if they're on a fiscal year, but they will actually get it after our, it'll be in next year's fiscal budget.
Do on a fiscal year, July 1 to?
But if you don't do it, they won't collect any money for another year, is my point. Because we get, we don't know what that's going to be till we know what that's going to be.
You'd use.
This 4% gone away, then.
No, because the 4% is still tied to the total.
The 4% with the minimum.
So if it's 4% of 2.6 this year, that is higher than our 100K, which is, and then any of that growth, then you're taking 50% of that growth, which is what's proposed.
The mayor's, the mayor's motion didn't accommodate.
No, my motion is that they get 100,000 no matter what and they get 50%.
And then 50% of anything over 2.4, which I think is actually better than the 4%.
It is. It's a lot better than 4%.
Why?
But they wanted both. That's what they were looking for.
Because that's what we were saying, is tie it to the 4% of the overall, which will then go in with a floor of 100K. And then you get the 50% of the growth on top of that. And that's the only way.
4% of 2.4 is only $96,000.
Right. It's not quite to your 100,000.
That's why I'm giving you the 100,000.
The mayor's proposal, if we just went with the 4%, it'd be 104,000 at 2.6. The mayor's proposal is 200,000.
Yeah. So it's higher.
Yeah, it's higher. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Right. Right. Right.
My deal's a better deal.
It is.
Yeah.
That was shown.
It is.
I think what he's thinking is it's 4% of the 2.6 and 50% over the 2.5.
Yes.
Or whatever.
2.4.
2.4, sorry.
Yes.
You, you would actually get well over 100,000.
$4,000 difference.
Right. So you.
Yeah, you're, you're only talking $4,000 difference.
Okay. So but you're, now we're standing at the 100,000 plus the 50% over 2.4.
Mayor's motion was 100,000, but 50%.
Yours was, yours was two and a half million. Mine's 2.4. That's, that's up for what you're talking about.
Yes. Okay. Perfect.
Because he lowered it.
I lowered the base.
And so my question then, going back, because I'm fine with this, if that's what we want to do for this year. My question, Mayor, and I haven't heard any other, I think Dan might have mentioned something, is what is the appetite? What do we do to increase that percentage going forward? I mean, what are the thoughts on that? Because that is something that if we ever want to be competitive, I mean, I think that the CBB appreciates if we get a $40,000 bump or whatever, that just literally is going to go into more sponsorships or possibly the addition of staff to recruit more of those events. And so trying to plan for the future and grow with this opportunity is how do we do that? How can we increase that overall percentage, which now we're not tied to a percentage, but I understand, like, how would we ever get to, in the next two years, three years, would we ever get to the then 200,000 as being bumped in?
If you did 3 million, if we did 3 million, which seems to be real, a realistic number based upon the amount of hotels you've been renting, you will pick up 300,000 plus your 100.
There's your increase.
100.
I think, I think what the mayor's proposing is fair because it benefits, it's taken that, we're, we're assuming that before CBB existed, we always got 2.4 anyways. So now we're split.
Which I think is way high.
But I'm, that's, we're using that logic. And anything above that, they get 50% commission on, in effect. So if it goes to 3 million, then all of a sudden, they've got a bigger pot of money and they never go lower than the 100,000.
They're never going to go lower than 100,000.
And they're never going to.
No.
Unless we have.
That's where I say, I think the mayor's proposal is very beneficial to the CBB.
Yeah. No, I.
It is.
I, I understand how this will benefit, but I guess my worry is, too, is, and I don't know this answer. I'm just, and I'm far, again, far from an expert in these fields. But I'm saying there will be, unless you add additional hotel properties and more hotel rooms, there is almost a ceiling for how much you'll be able to collect. You know what I mean?
Yes, I understand that, but I think that we are going to realize that growth.
So if you don't increase the percentage overall, your budget is just going to stagnate. I mean, I'm, hey, this is, this is a great step in the right direction. I'm fine moving forward and we can live to fight another day and just continue to rehone the system. But I, I'm fine with that.
All right.
Okay.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Passe's 5-0.
5-0.
Number 15, WIC com center, technical change reducing the tower rental revenue and adjusting the expense allocations to the other entities. Number 51, WIC IT, technical change removing the security information event management software from the budget as it is not approved in the county's budget.
52, may I make a motion?
Go ahead.
Motion directing staff to incorporate all the technical changes into the FY 2024 CIP and FY 2024 operating budgets.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Passe's 5-0.
Motion directing staff to balance FY 2024 CIP and FY 2024 operating budgets.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Passe's 5-0.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right.
No, I had to cancel.
Thank you, Baron Counsel.
Thank you.